I'd like to call the order, City of Oconomowoc Common Council for Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020. Call to order and confirmation that appropriate meeting notice was given.
Yes, Your Honor, it has.
And would all please rise and the flag's behind us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All please.
Alderman Kavieski.
Here.
Alderman Rogers. Alderman Rosick.
Here.
Alderman Zaffel.
Present.
Alderman Ellis.
Here.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Here.
Alderman Mulder.
Here.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Here.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion for approval of the meeting minutes for the minutes of May 5th, 2020. So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
On to the next. We're very excited to have a presentation and discussion by the Oconomowoc Area School District. We have with us tonight Dr. Roger Rindo, who's the Superintendent of the Oconomowoc Area School District, and the new school board president, Dr. Rick Grotheaus. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mayor Magnus. Appreciate the invitation to come and speak with you all tonight. It's always good to strengthen the partnership between a local school district and the municipalities that it serves. That benefits everybody, so we're glad to be here. Now, providing for the education of our community's children is one of the most important responsibilities that a community has, and we are very fortunate to live in a community, wonderful community, that values and supports the education of its youth. The result is an outstanding school district, full of teachers, staff, and administration who are committed and who care about, so strongly about, the education of their students. Our purpose as a school board is to provide governance in support of student learning that prepares students for the challenges of life. We certainly have some new and old challenges, life challenges, that we are all facing right now, so it's an opportunity for us to model for our students, this is how to figure this stuff out, and in that, hopefully preparing them to deal with the challenges they're going to have to take over when they are adults and in society. I'd like to introduce to you our superintendent of schools, Dr. Roger Rindo, who will share with you all the things the teachers, the staff, and the administration have been doing, both to respond to the closing of the schools, when that was required of us, and also in planning for the reopening of the schools in the fall. On behalf of the school board, I'd like to thank Dr. Rindo and every person working in the school district for all they have done to keep our community's children learning. They've done a magnificent job in a very challenging situation. Dr. Rindo?
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. And Mayor Magnus, thank you for giving us the chance to speak and talk a little bit about our experience over the last two months. Just like you, it has been quite an experience, and what I'd like to do tonight is to share a few things about the experience that we had around the first two months, to talk a little bit about the foundation and the framework that we have set out for the next year and frankly, the next 18 months and beyond, very similar to what your response plan looks like in three phases. And then more specifically, Rick and I would like to talk about our return planning for this fall. This is our first pandemic. This is your first pandemic, and one thing for certain is there's going to be challenges along the way, there are going to be opportunities along the way as well, and so we'll talk about a little bit about both of those. Frankly, we began this work in February. Like you, we were watching what was happening in Wuhan, China in January, and in February, when American universities began bringing our students back from Europe from study abroad programs, that began to get our attention, and at the same time, some of the first cases of COVID-19 were occurring here in the United States. And so we actually dusted off the H1N1 pandemic plan that was developed in 2009 and began in earnest. Some folks on my team thought we were a little crazy, but we began putting a plan together in the event that we were going to close. We really thought that we were going to be dealing with an ongoing health crisis at that time, similar to what H1N1 was, and didn't expect the advancement as quickly as it was. But we were prepared, and we closed on the 13th of March. Consistent with our plan, the first two days, the following week, were designed for our teachers to spend some time operationalizing those plans, and we opened up virtually and in paper copy for our young kids in grades PK through 3 on Wednesday, the 18th of March. Like Rick, I am so pleased and so proud to stand in front of you today and talk about the response that our faculty and staff had in supporting our kids at this really critical time, but I'm also so grateful to the community. We'll talk about that here in just a little bit. We were a one-to-one district in grades 4 through 12, so all of our kids left school on the 13th with their Chromebook, and we started in grades K through 3 with hard paper copy. We moved actually to mobile devices in early April, and so we were PK-12 virtual by early to mid-April. While we had devices, we did not have accessibility for all of our kids. We had about 30 mobile hotspots. We needed 60 more. I want to publicly thank the Oconomowoc Area Foundation and the Oconomowoc Public Education Foundation and some community donors who quickly came forward and got us the funds that we needed to put, hotspots in every child's hands, and so 100% of our kids had accessibility to the Internet very quickly and early on in the process, and we're grateful for that support. One thing that we, I think, take for granted here in this community is how generous the community is and how much it supports education. That doesn't happen everywhere. We take that for granted a little bit, and it can't be stated enough how grateful we are for that kind of support. While what went on in our homes was remote learning, it wasn't necessarily what one would consider full-on virtual education. It was emergency remote learning that used virtual tools, but we were guided by best practice. Our teachers met with students via Zoom. I learned an awful lot about Zoom pretty quickly and Google Meets, but our teachers met with kids in whole group, they met with them in small groups, and one-on-one. Our parent professionals, our interventionists met with them, also our student services personnel met with them. So as we were attending to the educational needs of kids, we were also mindful of the challenges socially and emotionally that kids and families were having, and so our counselors and our social workers connected with them on a regular basis. We also quickly learned that teaching in this environment was very different, and we had 300 first-year teachers. Planning for virtual and remote learning is different, it takes time, and we also learned for the first time that we had a lot of parents who, for the first time, were teaching assistants, and many of them while they were still being full-time employees, working virtually. And so fairly early on, we made a switch to what we called Planning Mondays. It didn't mean that learning stopped, it meant that direct instruction stopped. Kids had the opportunity to pick up missing work or to complete assignments that were assigned late last, or the previous week, and it gave our teachers a chance to collaborate. They met in grade-level teams, they met with their principal, and it also allowed us access to teachers for some fairly timely professional development around the kinds of tools and strategies that we were implementing on a real-time basis with our kids. We also tried very early on and continued to do what we could to support our kids, our families, and to lead in this community at a really crucial time. We had three days of instruction before spring break. The Sunday after spring break, we started serving meals to kids and families. Supported by the USDA, it doesn't cost the district a dime, it's fully reimbursed by a program in the federal government guided by our food service team. Families in need began to be able to pick up food. That continues and that will continue until August 31st, supported by the USDA. Any family in the Oconomowoc Area School District who has kids at the age of 18 or under can come and pick up food at no cost at East Campus. Beginning next week, that delivery will only occur on Mondays, but people can drive up from 8:00 to 10:00 p.m. and 8:00 to 10:00 a.m., and again from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. There is no prequalification. You determine need, and any family who has need can come and pick that up. Right now, we're on average, we're delivering about 5,000 meals a week to families in the Oconomowoc Area School District, and that's supported by some general generous donations of blessings in a backpack. We've had two truckloads, and by that I mean truckloads, not backpack, not backseats, truckloads of food. We're grateful for the support of that program that's been, that has allowed us to supplement food for young kids or for other family members, aside from the kids who are struggling in that house. Fairly early on, we were pleased to partner with the YMCA. Our board approved a partnership with the Y. We were able to allow space at Summit Elementary School at no cost to the Y. They then were allowed, or able to provide childcare at cost for families of essential workers, for healthcare providers, and for first responders. It was a proud partnership that we were able to provide for the real heroes here, and those are the folks who are on the front lines fighting this virus and working very hard. We also were happy to provide some Blacktop. A number of churches in the community used the high school parking lot for church services. That continued, and I think we're providing the parking lot space for moonlit movies here next week. We're excited to be able to do that and give this community something to do and to look forward to. I'm not going to spend some time, spend a lot of time talking about this, but we worked really hard at streamlining our communication. We, most of it came from a one-stop shop, from me internally to faculty and staff, from me to families as necessary, but we really didn't want to inundate people with emails, and so we used digital means. We were on social media, multiple platforms, all the communication that went out. By the way, you have some communication in folders at your places, some key things. You can also find this online, it's publicly accessible, but there's our three-phase transition plan, our interim pandemic report, the timeline that we're using for our fall return planning, as well as a press release that is, has just been sent out to the media that summarizes and celebrates the things that we have done over the last two months, but also spent some time talking about the timeline for return. We had a great opportunity to work with the media and tell some stories early on when there was first a closure. One of the big stories was what our school is going to do, but then as that situation wore on, there were certainly more pressing matters in the media. We did send out over 10 press releases since the closure with some interesting stories about the things that are happening in our schools. Really quickly, there's a three-phase framework, it's in your folders, but there's three areas that we focus on. The first was resilience, is what we called it, and that was how do we ensure that we provide for the social, emotional well-being of our kids in this transition into closure? How do we continue to provide a continuity of learning for our kids? And then, more importantly, how do we think about what summer school looks like? Right now, we're offering that as a virtual option, but we're planning for some face-to-face interaction. We know that we'll have access to kids, we think, we hope, if things continue as they are in July. And so some of our most vulnerable students, some of our kids who have not responded well or didn't engage in this virtual platform are going to be invited to our schools. It gives us a chance to practice some of the possibilities for return, and it gives our kids some very badly needed help, and so we're excited about that as an opportunity. The lion's share of our work that we're going to be doing now going forward into September is return planning. How do we take a look at scenarios that allow kids back into our buildings? It is our hope that we can do everything that we can to get students back in our buildings in the space that is allowed. We also recognize that we will have to do some planning around a fully virtual option in the event that that's mandated, that something comes up either at the state, local, or board level that will require closure for some degree of time or any degree of time. We're also looking at options, hybrid options, in between. Finally, we know that, it's been said, that you really can't overlook the opportunities embedded in any good crisis, and one of the things that we can consider is what happened over the last two months didn't give us some good learning. It created some opportunities, and so long-term, we'll build into our strategic plan the kinds of things that we learn and the kinds of things that we might evolve into as an education community. How might we take what we know and change what we do and reinvent what schooling looks like in some significant ways on a PK-12 basis? Again, that's not anything that's going to happen short-term, but it's something that we can consider and that we'll build on. Primarily, we're thinking tonight and talking tonight about return planning, and there's some key things within this framework that I want you to know. One, that we've already surveyed families and staff and students in grades 5 through 12 about their experience over the last two months. We'll take that learning and build it into our planning as we go forward. The board is already engaged in multiple conversations about their priorities, their guiding principles, the lenses through which we need to evaluate potential scenarios as we engage with the board. I'm so pleased to be able to say that we've been working with the board, and they have committed to some strong collaboration around this work as we plan for what the fall will look like. We'll be planning multiple scenarios. As I said, those scenarios that will include anything from face-to-face to a hybrid option, that includes some face-to-face and some virtual, and then of course, a virtual option in the event that that's mandated and we have to do that. I also want you to know that we'll be continuing to engage this community, the families of our kids. We have that preliminary data, but as we begin building scenarios, we're going to, we will survey them later this month in what we're calling a preference survey to give us specific feedback, what options around these scenarios work best for them, and then we'll use those data with the board to further inform and further flesh out our transition plans for the fall. I mean, we have a pretty clear and specific timeline that I'll share with you in a minute, but I want Rick to talk a little bit more specifically about those priorities and guiding principles.
So as elected representatives of the community, we, the members of the school board, our purpose is to provide governance, to give the leadership in regards to our perspectives on how we can best serve the community in hearing what the community needs are and looking out for the education of our kids. And as we talked as a school board, we came up with five questions that we are going to ask the administration to consider and to answer carefully as they engage in planning in any of the scenarios, any of the three scenarios, as they move forward in preparation for opening the schools in the fall. And that first, are these available? Should I? Because I don't know if they're, can I put them, move it over here? Okay, so the first and foremost priority is, of course, safety. And so we're going to ask the administration to consider, how will the district ensure the safety of the students and the staff? We know that there are, and Roger has told me today, that there's maybe one-third of our staff who are concerned for their own health reasons. They fit that higher-risk category, whether it be for underlying conditions or simply age. So that's an awful lot of teachers that we'd be asking to come in and maybe be put in harm's way, if you will, so we have to be careful of that and make sure that they are safe. And of course, the students, our primary responsibility is safety of the students. And part of that responsibility is for the student's safety, but also what they bring home to their families as well. So safety is number-one concern. We have to be sure and ensure that the parents feel confident that the schools are prepared for the safety of the students as well as the staff. Second is, we're asking the administration, how will the district attend to the social and emotional needs of students, staff, and parents? Schooling is about learning, obviously, learning content and learning the different subjects, but it's also a place for kids to grow up, and that's, and we are human, as human beings, we are very social in nature, and learning is a very social construct as well, as well as the emotional side of things. And so taking care of those things, we know that kids are struggling, are struggling with learning at home and not being around their peers. We know families are struggling with that. We know teachers are struggling with that. So we're going to ask our administration to be very careful and very intentional in considering, how can we support students and teachers and families in that dimension of who we are as human beings? Of course, we want the administration to consider, how will the district ensure adequate, equitable, and quality teaching and student learning, again, no matter the scenario? The adjustment that the teachers made was fantastic. It was hard. It wasn't perfect. Some kids thrived in this situation, other kids were very challenged in this virtual learning situation. There probably will be, can we say, some components of virtual learning, it's very likely that that's going to occur, and I know they learned a lot about how to improve those offerings for kids, but we need to really get intentional and be serious about how can we give it the best, make it the best that it can be. Fourth, we are asking them how we engage families, staff, and communities in our planning work. It's not just the district, the educators hired, or the school board only. We need to hear the voices of everyone in the district to inform us how we can move forward and how to best meet their needs, because the needs vary across the board from one end of the spectrum to the another, and we have to figure out how we can make that happen the best. And of course, lastly, what are the budget implications? We know that, we anticipate that there'll be reduced revenues from the state as a result of all this, and we don't yet know what the additional costs are going to be to try and make the adjustments that need to occur, but that's an important consideration that the administration will be taking up as they consider the various scenarios. Okay?
Lastly, if you take a look at the timeline, it looks like it's a month and a half, and it is a month and a half. And in most years, thinking about September 1 right now, that would be the last thing that would be on any of our minds. We'd be preparing for graduations, we'd be getting ready to celebrate the end of the school year, and we'd be turning the school buildings over for summer capital project planning, and we'd be getting ready for summer school. But when you think about what's necessary to ensure that we have a plan, that we've communicated that plan, that we have developed staff capacity around that plan, and that we're ready for September 1, these six weeks are going to go pretty quickly. I won't read the timeline to you, but there's a couple key things that I want to highlight for you. There's a meeting on June 9th. All of our board meetings right now are held virtually, but you can still watch any one of them via livestream, just like you would if we were meeting in person on the website and hitting the livestream link. When we go live, you get to see the Zoom meeting in real time. That meeting is going to be an opportunity for us to engage with the board around some preliminary options, some scenarios, and a discussion around the very lenses that Rick talked about. How are our preliminary scenarios meeting those guiding principles and those board priorities? We will then provide a survey to the community again on the 11th to families, asking them for some preference feedback, come back at it again on the 16th with the board at a regular meeting and a lengthy discussion around those scenarios, and then spend some time working and being prepared to announce to the families and community at the end of this month what that scenario is, what that scenario will look like. And it's very realistic that that scenario might be different at each one of our levels. It's tough to watch little ones, frankly, struggle with reading and virtually, and math virtually. It's also tough to provide social distancing for 1,700 students in a high school, and so it's likely that there'll be some variation around that. We also know that from a workforce standpoint, childcare is one of those things that sometimes people struggle with in order to return to work. We recognize that, and we recognize our role in that partnership. I can't make you any promises, but we also know that it's good for everybody if our youngest children are in schools and working face-to-face. Then in July, when we get back from celebrating Independence Day, for a week or a week and a half, we're going to spend some time in some community presentations. By then, we'll have a much better idea and some details around those scenarios, and we're going to bring families, anyone's invited, but we're going to bring families together, and we're going to bring them back into their schools. I'm very hopeful that we can actually be back in schools and if things continue as they are in July. Buildings are just buildings unless, until you put kids and families in them, then they become schools again. What better way to celebrate than becoming schools again than talking about what's going to happen in the fall? And so we'll have a series of opportunities for families to engage both with us and with each other around their needs and in feedback around what's happening in the plans for the fall. We're hopeful that those plans are things that we'll be able to follow through on. We don't know what the next two months or three months is going to bring, but we intend to be prepared. We also intend to be partners with you to the extent that we can. We're grateful for the opportunity to speak here, but as we think about this work together, the school district, 5,300 kids, over 500 staff members, are a significant part of this community, and we want to be part of responding as well, and look forward to partnering with that, with you in the future. Thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. I'd like to leave it open to any council member that may have a question. For either gentleman? Any questions?
Your mic on the table should work.
Alderman Ellis.
On the table, on your table.
Hello? Hello? There we go. So, thank you for that presentation, I appreciate it. My question is, as far as the sports program is concerned, will you all be looking into whether or not there will be a sports program for the foreseeable future? I'm referring to both football and wrestling.
We will. We're awaiting some guidance from WIAA. I know that they've met with their sports advisory folks, the doctors who advise them. The National Federation has put out guidelines. I'll tell you, those guidelines are fairly stringent when you consider sports like football and wrestling, those that have the closest contact, but ultimately, at this point, absent some specific guidance, and I expect that that will come, that will be a conversation that we'll have with the board. I mean, I think some sports, as a former coach, are easier than others from a safety perspective to imagine right now in this return. Others are a bit more difficult.
Alderman Mulder.
Yeah, great presentation. It's very helpful. There's a lot of questions in the community around what you just presented, as you know. Are you considering the return plan to be for the entire semester, for the entire year? One semester, one term? How are you going to make that decision?
Yes. We, that's actually a really good question, and it's one that I'm happy to clarify. We are trying to develop plans that are very nimble, and for example, you heard me refer a number of times to, did I do that? You're playing a riffle. You heard me refer a number of times to a virtual learning plan that we feel obligated to be preparing for in the event that widespread closures are mandated. We also expect, though, that there are going to be families who are going to want that plan accessible, even if we're in a face-to-face option or a hybrid option because of the health needs of the child or someone in that family. We envision plans that are nimble enough that a child might be in that for first quarter or first term, family becomes more comfortable, they realize that a vaccine is developed and 100 million doses are distributed across the country, and that family wants that child back in. We expect that what we'll be planning will allow for that child to move in seamlessly now as if they're moving in from Albuquerque, right? So that we'll be using similar curriculum and similar strategies. There will always likely be some virtual component, even face-to-face work right now, so that we keep students practiced and attuned to that in the event that we have to go back out again. We will be prepared, we are moving to Canvas as a learning platform in grades 5 through 12, so we will be prepared even in a face-to-face scenario for a move to virtual, even if it's short-term, if we have an exposure and we have a couple cases of COVID in one school and we need to close down so that we can deep clean, we will have the opportunity to move also to virtual in a short-term emergency setting, similar to what we did now.
Alderman Ellis.
I understand the virtual learning, and I think that's going to be kind of the new normal in some senses of the word. My question is in reference to your summer programs for purposes of summer school and things such as the activities like O-Power and things along those lines. What's going to happen to those?
Right now, we have a virtual summer school that's planned, including an O-Power. Coach O'Connor's done a really, really nice job of planning multiple opportunities for students that are body weight-oriented, that also includes speed, strength, and conditioning. If we have access to kids on July 1st, and at this point, we're still hoping to, that we would then, we would transition that back into a face-to-face opportunity. O-Power would be face-to-face, but it would be small groups, so we would be, we would continue with the guidance that the county has provided, and we would certainly make sure that any opportunity that we're bringing kids together on a face-to-face basis would be approved by the Health Department, but we're hoping to have access face-to-face to students in O-Power and more broadly, summer school during the month of July, and we're, we'll be updating the board on that next month.
Alderman Rosack.
Yeah, real briefly, prior to the pandemic, did all kids have Chromebooks prior to the pandemic, or was that kind of something you guys just started doing?
No, we, good question. We, we had a three-year phase in a number of years ago, and prior to the pandemic, all of our students in grades 4, 12 had a Chromebook and will continue to have access to Chromebooks. We took the, kind of the ancillary digital devices that existed in all of our buildings, marshaled them to the East Campus, and then distributed those for kids in grades K through 3 who didn't have a device at home for digital access so that we could go fully virtual. We are going to maintain that next year so that kids do have a device that they have their own. It's a whole lot safer to have students have their hands on one device versus sharing devices, and it's also a proactive opportunity in the event that we have to go back out again, kids have the device with them.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. The other question I had out of your presentation, which was good, you said every kid gets a hotspot. What if they, did every kid get a hotspot?
No, it's students who needed them. We had about 60 who didn't have Internet access at home.
Okay, because I mean, like, I've got really fast Internet in my house, they wouldn't have needed it.
Right.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
But gentlemen, thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Very impressive. Thank you.
You guys have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree. Very good.
The next agenda item are comments or suggestions from citizens. I have not received any cards, and we will move on, so thank you. Item seven, consent agenda item, consider one motion. I'll leave it open to entertain a motion at this time for licenses, sidewalk seating, and decorative display applications for Coco's Seafood and Steakhouse.
I'll move items 7, A and B together.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. The move. We're going to move on to committee reports. First is Public Services, Mark Frye. Mark, if you could come up and give us a brief overview, and we will then be considering, consider Act on Resolution 20-R2881, setting permit fees for Section 8.04 of the City of Oconomowoc Municipal Code. Mr. Frye.
Thank you, Mayor. The item before you tonight is tied to an item that the council approved back on May 5th when they repealed and recreated Section 8.04 of the city ordinances that deals with the use of the city's right-of-way. As part of that ordinance, it did note in there that the permit fees would be set by resolution, and that's the item that's before you tonight. Once the ordinance was repealed and recreated, I went to the staff and had them look and put together what they thought would be the time needed for a permit issuance for the for the two different phases of the 8.04 ordinance, which is excavations and then also above-ground structures. Each one of those had slightly different requirements within the ordinance, and that's why you're seeing a difference in the cost. So based on what we feel would be our staff time, we're recommending at this time for a permit fee of $250 for the excavation portion of the ordinance, and then $380 for the above-ground structure part of it.
Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Alderman Rozak?
Yeah, just briefly, in the committee, we talked about the pole attachment agreements and looking into whether, when the poles get removed, that we're able to also remove any attachments to it. We hope to address that in utilities. Prior to the meeting today, I had several calls and emails about something I think should come up with the Technology Committee, which has to do with the matching color of any attachments, as well as, what was the other one? There was another one. But I've, I've got a, I've got an email on it, so it's just something that I think Technology Committee can look into in the future.
Any further comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Alderman Zaffel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Next committee report is utility, Kevin Freiber. And we're going to be considering an act on resolution 20-r2879 for the Wisconsin DNR 2019 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report. Mr. Freiber.
Thank you. The Compliance Maintenance Annual Report is basically the report card for the wastewater treatment plant on how we did in 2019. It's your chance to take a look at and see how our results are, not only on the water coming into the treatment plant, but the water that's leaving and heading out to the Conomowoc River. The Compliance Maintenance Annual Report is required by the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources to have a resolution that you guys approve stating that you have seen the entire report. The report basically has nine different parts to it. We have the influence, the BOD and C-BOD, TSS, and TSS is total suspended solids, phosphorus, biosolids, staffing and preventive maintenance, operator certification, financial and collection. Each one of those sections goes into details on how we did throughout the year, starting in January of 2019 and ending in December 31st of 2019. Is there any questions I can answer on as far as the report goes?
Alderman Rozak?
Yeah, Kevin, just commend you and your staff. It looks like the bottom of page one here in the memo, it says 10th year with a perfect score.
Yes.
Of 4.0. I did close to that good in college, but there were a couple Cs and Bs in there, so that's commendable. I did have one question. Section four, future planning, number, item three under there is the sanitary collection system rehab that was supposed to be done this year. Is that in the process, or are you, okay, you guys are in the process of that. Okay. That was it. Thank you. Nice report.
Entertain a motion? So moved. Second. Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Alderman Zaffel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Let's move on to new business. Mr. Frye, if you could come back, please. This is for consideration or act on a development, developers agreement for Lake Country Village Edition Number Four. Can you give us a brief summary, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Lake Country Village has been, I don't know, probably a couple of years in, in development. It sits just east of East Lake Village, south side of Valley Road. Over in that area, it's being done within the village of Summit. One of the things that the city had agreed to in our board agreement was that we'd provide sanitary sewer and water to this area to allow for more dense development for the village. And the developers agreement for you tonight is necessary because of that. Even though the development's outside of the city, they're putting in public infrastructure that'll be dedicated back to us, so the agreement is in place for those items. And so it's slightly reduced down from what our normal developers agreement looks like, but it is mainly just to cover those items. 305 lot subdivision, this phase, prior to this phase, 225 of those lots had been approved and are either under construction or will soon be constructed on, so it's been moving along well.
Alderman Rozak.
Yeah, these, I don't have all the other old development agreements in front of me, but I'm assuming this one's very similar to the first three we had with them, or nearly identical.
Changed the name at the top and the phase number, so.
Yeah, and it's, so it's been approved multiple times by the council.
Yes.
Entertain a motion? So moved. Second. Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Alderman Zaffel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg. Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Moving on to mayorial appointments with council confirmation number 10. This is going to be divided into two motions, please. The first are the various appointments and reappointments. The new technology committee, as you have in front of you in the memorandum, for Ryan Bennett, Jill Persek, and Peter Heft. Police and Fire Commission, Mike Berry, and Bureau of Economic Development and Tourism, reappointment of Sherri Sinsala, and the Library Board, which is Sheila Homburg. I'll entertain a motion for that group. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Spiegelberg.
I got too many microphones here. I just want to make a correction for the record that it's actually going to be called the Technology Board and not the Technology Committee.
Thank you. So we'll make it happen. Good. Any further discussion? Alderman Kavieski.
Just like to thank those who have stepped up and either continue to serve in that role or are serving for the first time in that role. It takes good people from the committee, community to fill the spots that help to provide us with information for considered policy. So thank you very much for, for stepping up and stepping in.
Call roll, please.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Alderman Zaffel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
The next section are the reappointments for the Architectural Commission. I'd like to make a brief statement and then move forward. On January 9th, 2019, under the direction and recommendation of our city legal council, volunteer commissioners on the Architectural Commission recuse themselves from a vote in the best interest of the city. Today, I present to the council three commissioners for reappointment to the Architectural Commission. The chairman of this commission, Kent Johnson, is present here to answer your questions, along with the other three appointees. He is available to answer any questions, and I'd like to open it up to the council for any questions. Mr. Johnson, if you could come to the podium.
Good evening. I'm Kent Johnson. Happy to answer any questions. I did have a conversation with Mr. Rozak last Friday, tried to clarify some things as to what exactly happened. We certainly did this that night, not for any personal reasons, really for the, in the best interest of the city. That was all we were concerned about. And I don't know if that got clearly passed on to some of the city councilmen, but that's the reality. We went with, we talked to Mr. Riffle prior to the meeting, and Jason Gallo as well, and felt that by us voting, we would potentially put the city in, in a, in a bad situation in terms of potential lawsuits. That's why we recused ourselves, not because we were afraid to do something, and we, where we were not up to the challenge. We certainly have been up to this challenge. We've done, and I think that myself and Mr. Schultz and Mr. Flint and the other board members have done a tremendous job for the city as volunteers. I think I've been on the board for, gosh, I think at least 10 years, and same with these guys for a long, long time. You know, we're committed to the city. We, we want to see Conomowoc grow correctly, in the right direction, and we feel as architects that we were simply listening to guidelines that we were given that evening and voted.
I'd like to entertain a motion? So moved.
Second.
Open for discussion, please. Alderman Ellis.
I was one of the individuals who said no. And I did it because of information that I had received. I am the type of individual that when I make a mistake, own up to it. In this case, I've made a mistake. And I hope that you all could, at some point, forgive me for that. You all have done an outstanding job over the past years. My, my concerns were answered when I saw the transcripts of those meetings. I won't delay it. I just want you to know that I was wrong, and I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. Alderman Spiegelberg.
I just want to thank all three of you guys for coming back, because I'm not sure in the same situation if I would have done so. So I very much appreciate you guys coming back and look forward to having you serve the city and continue to serve the city.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Yeah, I echo. I appreciate you being here all tonight. I completely disagree that we made a mistake. I think we exercised our oversight function as a council. Now that more information has come to light, I think we can act on that information responsibly. But I, I think it's interesting, you know, for the public record, this has been an issue. I mean, people are concerned about it. A lot of people in our city were upset with the way that things unfolded. And so I think just for the public's knowledge to understand how it came about, what it was that caused you to decide to recuse yourself from, from the decision should be known. I mean, was it, was it your decision on your own, or was it strictly from the advice of the council that you did that?
Well, I think it was from the advice of the council.
Right, and that wasn't presented to us. It wasn't presented that way in the public record, through the Journal Sentinel. It wasn't presented that way when we had this discussion two weeks ago. It wasn't, it wasn't explained, and it wasn't clarified. And so I think for that reason, it was important that we followed up on this and that we exercised our oversight function. And I'm, I'm happy we came to, this, this additional information was brought to light so we can make the right decision, but I, I don't have any regrets, and I don't think we made any mistakes in, in the decision we made two weeks ago.
Alderman Kavieski.
Just for clarif, and I, I agree with your statement. Just for clarification, it wasn't recommendation of this body being the council. It was recommendation of legal council that
Sorry, yeah.
Grew you to the recusal. The, and I was another one of, of the nay votes, that by no means do I want you to take that away from that vote, that your service to our city is not valued by, by this body, by myself, or by the community. And you know, serving as long as you have, that decisions made by those who do step up and step into those volunteer positions aren't always easy. And those difficult decisions are, are part of what you take on in that volunteer role.
Right.
And to that, I appreciate that from everyone who puts their, their time and their, their personal reputation and their efforts into that. And I think, again, to echo Alderman Shellpepper, the oversight of that with this body is, is what was exercised during that vote. I'm glad it flushed out the way it did, and I'm glad to see you back, and I appreciate that, and I look forward to, to providing a vote to allow that to continue. Thank you.
Alderman Zaffel.
I just want to be on the record saying thank you for stepping up to serve. I understand the responsibilities when you volunteer your time, to put your name out there and to serve your community, and thank you.
Alderman Rozak.
Yeah, thanks, guys, for coming. I, I put this forward a couple of weeks ago, and I agree with Mr. Shellpepper. I don't think we made a mistake. I think we did exercise some oversight. But look, I, I talked to all three of the members over the last week and a half and really investigated this, and I'm comfortable with the reasons for your recusals. I also think that this was a, you know, it's never pleasant, but sometimes, you know, there's votes that are taken and, you know, we get to the bottom of things, and I think ultimately this turned out well. I appreciate you guys putting your names back in the hat. Hopefully, we don't have really, you know, dicey decisions like this, but I expect potentially that could happen again. So for my purposes, I'll be voting for you guys tonight, and I welcome you back to the commission.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kent.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
And I would just like to disagree with Kavieski, Rozak, and Shellpepper, because I felt like we were sandbagged at the last meeting, and I felt like if there was additional information that we should have known or discussed, that it could have been done in a different way.
Alderman Mulder.
Stan, can you comment quickly on why you did advise them to recuse?
I need you in the mic, Stan.
We're in the middle of a lawsuit, okay? I'm not going to comment.
Any further discussion? Alderman Shellpepper.
Yeah, I would just say the public's business should be consulted in a public forum and not a private setting. No, not, not in regards to your statement.
I'll tell you right now.
I'm not, okay.
Okay.
I wasn't, I wasn't going there with you. No, I was referring to Alderman Spiegelberg's comment.
What, I'd like, Alderman Zaffel?
I do believe council did give a recommendation last week that he did advise the individuals to recuse themselves due to a conflict of interest. So I disagree with you, Alderman.
I'd like to call roll, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Alderman Zaffel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Thank you. I would like to make a short statement for public record. As this oversight and governing body, it's our responsibility together to try to bring all the facts to light. Those were brought in this case, which I'm very appreciative, and, and the right thing was done. What we want to do, especially with volunteers and all the wonderful people that work with us, is let's try to be as proactive as we can to get all of the facts so that you guys can make good, informed decisions. I will do my best to provide that for you, and I take 100% accountability that you did not have that two weeks ago. So let's work forward. We've got a great group of council members. We've got an incredible group of architects that are giving their time for us, and I'm very, very pleased that we're going in a positive direction. So I would like to move on to any staff reports. No staff reports? And then let's move on to reports from the aldermen, and I have a surprise for you. So this is the part of the meeting where each one of you has the option to make a public statement for two minutes. We've also mentioned that if you want to make a longer comments on any topic to help your constituents, you will let me know in advance, and I will give you more than two minutes. But in the interest of efficiency to help us move forward, who are we starting with?
We'll start with Alderman Kavieski.
Okay, let's see if this works. Alderman Kavieski.
I, I guess, if you could come back to me, I'd appreciate it. I do have a comment that I'd like to make, but I need to bring up some notes, and I didn't know what order we were going to go in, so I just want to be prepared.
Accepted. Let's move on to the next person. I'll reset. Hey, this is fine.
This will be Alderman Rozak.
Yeah, I'll pass.
Alderman Rozak.
I'll pass for now.
Pass.
Alderman Zaffel.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I know a lot of motions are running high in the community and in the country right now. I want to thank those who exercised their First Amendment right to protest and peacefully assemble in Waukesha yesterday. I want to thank them, and I want to thank them for never wavering on their message, and I want to thank those for working with the Waukesha Police Department and the Waukesha County Sheriff Department to make sure the protest was safe and peaceful. There is no place for looting or destroying property, or burning churches, or destroying businesses, many of them built by people of color who, for the first time, were beginning to realize their dreams and build wealth for their families. We need to distinguish between legitimate, peaceful protests and opportunist, violent destruction. Nor is it acceptable for our police, sworn to protect and serve all people, to escalate tensions or resort to excessive violence. Please be kind to each other, support each other, keep each other
Please be kind to each other, support each other, keep each other safe in the days ahead.
Well done. One minute. Next.
Alderman Ellis.
I'm going to pass for now.
Okay. Alderman Spiegelberg.
I just want to thank Jill Persick, who is here tonight, and Ryan Bennett, and Peter Heft, who have graciously consented to join us on the Technology Board. Alderman Rozak and I will be kind of drilling down on what we will start, and when we will start, and that will be hopefully soon, but thank you so much.
Where's P? Is Peter here?
No.
I was just going to try to wave them.
Alderman Mulder.
A pass.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Yeah, I, I've been, I was contacted by a few, you know, constituents over the last couple of weeks, just about, you know, improving our beaches and, you know, various things happening in the second district, and Sarah, Mark Frye, Craig, you guys have all just been super helpful and really responsive. It was, you know, I, honestly, I thought some of the, the requests that I made were going to, you know, kind of get caught up in the cogs of the city government, and it didn't happen that way at all. I mean, it, it went through right away, and we made tangible impact on our neighborhoods that were for a, a good, good cause. I mean, it, it helped people, it made them happy, and so, you know, I just, I really appreciate you guys doing that, and I, I think that's what our true function is, as a, as a body, and as a, as a community, is, is to help the people that live in this city. I mean, because that's, that's what we're here for, that's who, whose business we're doing, and, you know, that's, you know, that's, that's all I have to say, so thanks again, I really appreciate it. And so, so do those residents as well.
Alderman Kavieski.
Would you like a little more time?
I, I, I might go a little bit over, but it won't be very much.
Can we vote on that?
Huh?
Can we vote on that?
Sure. It's, it's kind of interesting, you know, I appreciate the, the, the time allotment and the attempt to be more efficient. It's kind of interesting, though, that as a, as a body, we, we meet twice a month, and if we're relegated to two minutes for public statement, that represents our position and our constituents, that's four minutes a month that we're allotted to provide voice for our constituents. So, I may provide you with notice more often than not.
And that's fine, and if we find that there's more value, as long as we're providing value to the community. Yes, sir. Thank you. So I will research this, but let's move forward. Alderman Kavieski.
So, I appreciate the comment from Alderman Zaffel. I also have put some thought into a, a comment associated with the challenges that we're going through right now. And really, there is, there is more power in unity than there is creating a divide. It seems, in the past several months, it has become easier for members of our society, and some here in our community, to retreat into a divided position, rather than find the strength to come together, not just as a group, but as a country. We are definitely in some uncharted times. It has come from our leaders and, and add to by some within our community, and imported into some communities from outside of them. We have seen division in such things as creating essential versus non-essential people. Open for business versus safer at home, concerned citizen protesters versus rioters and destroyers. These are just some of the examples of the division being promoted. That division married with the uncertainty of the times we are moving through with the pandemic, and impact on basic societal and, and personal needs, have some looking to find a way forward that doesn't seem to be clear, and others looking to deepen the divide to promote ideology away from the American spirit. Our city has been blessed with residents who are caring, thoughtful, compassionate, and a police department that exemplifies that as well. We are very fortunate here in Oconomowoc. We need to move forward as a community and a nation under one flag, the US flag, and respect, and, and the respect of the freedoms inherent and endowed that this country represents, united in the pursuit of happiness as you define it. As we continue to move forward, keep in mind that everyone is entitled to their positions. Shaming, intimidating, and bullying are not the tactics that should be tolerated. Look for what you seek, and it will be found if you struggle to find it, or want to see more of it, become it. Please just make sure that you are creating positive actions that build and not the actions that destroy. There is a sense of fear that has replaced the optimism that I saw not too long ago. Fear fosters anger, and anger destroys indiscriminately. So let's get back to that in which we built this strong union of, of states on. Be hopeful, be tolerant, have empathy for where others are in their journey, and be ready to support your neighbor. I am under two minutes. I appreciate the time.
No, somebody stopped it. Somebody stopped.
And I hope that this community continues to provide the example that others can follow as we move through these challenging times.
So in the interest of fairness, I have a few closing comments for the group. We have no more, do we have any more comments from aldermen?
No.
Okay, let's move on then to reports and comments from the mayor. So from the mayor's office, I have a few comments that are going to go out to you as, as council members, whoops, cool as council members, as well as to our community. Whether we want to admit it or not, race and gender affect the way we navigate our world. While our own community is incredibly fortunate that we have not faced any looting or violent acts in response to the murder of George Floyd, I want to take a moment of silence to recognize all the communities who are in pain. Unfortunately, these violent acts happening across the nation and close to home, Milwaukee, Madison, turn the focus from the peaceful protesters' messages of racism, inequality, bias, and a plea for accountability and change. And that's turned to a focus of hate, and resulting in horrible acts by a small few. I encourage all of us to take this opportunity to look inward and reflect, as well as turn outward and act. As elected officials, we have opportunities to take a leadership role to help reduce both the inequalities and the inequities in our community. They do exist. I challenge all of us to make a difference. Conversations and protests are beginning, but they are not enough. We must insist on meaningful and lasting change. Yes. I would entertain a motion to move on to the next item, to move to closed section per 19.851G, conferring with legal counsel for governmental body who is rendering oral and written advance concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Roll, please.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Alderman Zaffel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Thank you for all those that have attended, we're going to move on to closed session. Have a wonderful evening, be safe, be kind, and enjoy...